Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order of the Saco City Council for Monday, December 13, 2021. Let the record reflect the time is 6:30. With that, all the councilors are present, including the city administrator and city clerk. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Item four, general, we have two very special presentations this evening, and the first one is to recognize Saco's newest centenarian, and that is Wanda Ann Regina Massey. Saco has a long tradition of gifting locally-made walking canes to our oldest community members. Ernie Merritt, a Saco resident, makes these custom canes for centenarians in honor of pain awareness. Wanda Massey turned 100 on December 1. Congratulations. Wanda's parents immigrated from Poland in the early 1900s, and the family resided at 117 Summer Street in Bitterford, Maine. Wanda was born in Bitterford on December 1, 1921. Wanda attended Bitterford Schools and was a member of the Bitterford High School Glee Club and traveled to Washington, D.C. with her senior class. After graduating from Bitterford High School in 1938, Wanda worked at Fishman's and then Saco Lowell, where she eventually met her future husband. Wanda volunteered at the Penny Pincher, was a dachshund at the Saco Dyer Library, a member of the Alter Guild, and served as treasurer at a Trinity Episcopal Church in Saco. Wanda married Charles C. Massey, Sr. on June 29, 1951, and immediately became a mother to Patty, Michael, and David. The family moved from Camp Ellis to 264 Lincoln Street in Saco in 1954, and Wanda had one son, Charles C. Massey, Jr., on July 12 of the same year. At the age of 100, Wanda continues to live at 264 Lincoln Street with her son Chuck and daughter-in-law Jane. Wanda has eight grandchildren and 16 great-grandchildren. Wanda has always enjoyed her family, gardening, traveling, playing golf, and is an avid reader and does Sudoku daily. Please join me in congratulating and celebrating Saco's newest centenarian, Wanda Massey. At this time, I'd like to bring up State Senator Donna Bailey for some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. And, Wanda, it is very nice to meet you. And I have for you a legislative sentiment, which is the state of Maine Legislature's highest honor, and I'm just going to read it, okay? It says, "The state of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Wanda Massey of Saco, who celebrated her 100th birthday. We extend our congratulations and best wishes. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 130th legislature and the people of the state of Maine." And it's signed by Troy Jackson, the President of the Senate, Derek Grant, the Secretary of the Senate, Ryan Fekto, the Speaker of the House, who's from Bitterford, right across the river, and Robert Hunt, the Clerk of the House, sponsored by Senator Bailey of Saco, Representative Carlo of Buxton, Representative Copeland of Saco, and Representative O'Neill of Saco. I did take the liberty of looking up a few things to do with politics, and I would just share the trivia that when Wanda was born in 1921, the President of the United States was Warren G. Harding, the 29th President of the United States. We're now at number 46, as you know. The governor of the state of Maine was Percival P. Baxter, who, as you know, gave us Baxter State Park. And the mayor of Saco, who knows that one, huh? Was Dr. George R. Love. And the population of Saco, at least as of the 1920 census, was 6,817 people. So, Wanda, Saco, and the state of Maine and the country have come a long way, and so have you, Wanda. I did ask her to share with me her secret, and I'm going to share it with all of you. Her response was to just take it one day at a time, and I think that's wonderful advice. So, congratulations, Wanda. Here's the legislative sentiment. Oh, we can get a picture here. All right. You want to look right over there? Okay. All right. Congratulations. Very nice to meet you.
And at this time, we're going to take a picture and present a gift, and that is the long tradition of the locally-made walking canes. Item B on the agenda tonight under general is Habitat for Humanity presentation. I believe we will hear from Amy Nucci, the Executive Director.
I am here on behalf of our Board of Directors and our newest homeowner, Sarah, to thank the city for its donation of property on Marguerite Road for Habitat for Humanity Build. I also wanted to thank you as a private citizen of Saco. My kids have been coming to Habitat Build since before they could walk. My son is four, and he's starting to put things together and ask a lot more questions, and it means a lot to be able to tell them that the town we lived in, that we live in, recognized a need and donated the property to make this happen. So, thank you. For those who may not be as familiar with the project, we partnered with Sarah, who's a newly single mother of five special boys. She's a longtime resident of Saco, and when she applied to Habitat, she wasn't sure how she was going to remain in town and afford a place to live in her new circumstances. She wasn't sure how she'd be able to stay here in the community where they built a network of services for her special boys and also had friends throughout the city. Thanks to your generous donation of land, we were able to build a home in Saco. We were able to partner with Sarah, and she's able to remain in the city. For those who weren't able to come to the dedication, I just wanted to read the words that Sarah shared at the dedication. "One year ago, I was clinging to the shards of our shattered former life. I was suddenly a disabled, single mother trying to raise five boys. How do I keep a roof over their heads? How are you supposed to navigate this without ending up homeless? I tried every avenue and was met again and again with dead ends. I saw no way through. If it were only myself, I could survive living out of my van, but not with them. How was it possible that they were opening up applications for a home to be built in the same town where my children have spent most of their lives and where they were already integrated into the school systems and special education programs? We again have hope for healing in the future. We have a home. None of this would be possible without the generous donations from Hancock Lumber and all of the sweat equity from everyone who volunteered to build our home. Thank you feel so inadequate to capture the magnitude of our gratitude, but it is all I have. So, thank you, everyone. Truly, I have no words. The feeling of standing in this house brings an unexplainable sense of awe. This is mine. I did this. I did this for them. Seeing the boys start to acclimate to our home and release the anxiety and tension I didn't even recognize they were carrying brings me to tears. They can play and be loud and not have fear for their safety for just being kids. Christmas is going to be magical simply because of this. We are safe." So, thank you all very much for all of your support. Instead of doing plaques, we've made photo books of the project and the home and the family, so we would just like to present one to you out of appreciation for your contribution.
Thank you. Up next is item five on the agenda, and that is Committee Correspondence to Council. Any Committee Correspondents at this time? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I've been busy since the last meeting. I've attended three committee meetings, so I'll be brief on updates for each. The Energy and Sustainability Committee met on December 7. Couple of points, municipal energy usage data is being compiled and will be shared with the committee at its January meeting, so we can monitor and hopefully improve energy usage. Document storage has become a concern, both in quantity and available storage locations within municipal buildings, so there are various options being looked at, including the potential use of data imaging. They are all currently being investigated. And finally, the air quality issues at the fire station continue to be monitored and remediated as needed, so that seems to be under control. The second committee I'd like to report on is the Age Friendly Saco Group. They met also on December 7. Age Friendly Saco continues to advocate for the needs of Saco's older citizens, and some current projects include development of an on-demand transportation program utilizing AmeriCorps volunteer staffing and coordinating efforts with the Bitterford-Saco Orchard Beach Transit. Using a Rotary Club of Saco Bay District grant proceeds to purchase, I'm sorry, they used a Rotary Club of Saco Bay District grant to purchase additional devices for the Tech Handy Helper Program. And they're also assisting in the development of the City of Saco's Chapter 175 Senior Tax Assistance Program, which is an item on tonight's agenda. Again, with Age Friendly, on Thursday, December 23, using donations from several businesses and community service groups, Age Friendly, Saco, and the Ferry Beach Retreat and Conference Center will be delivering free meals to community members. To sign up for a meal that will be delivered to you, visit ferrybeach.org/meal-delivery. And lastly, for Age Friendly, beginning in 2021, this current year, AARP developed, and this is AARP in Maine, developed an award called the Beacon Community Award, and it's to be given annually to the one age-friendly designated community in Maine that reflects, and I quote, "exemplary efforts and achievements in building an age-friendly and livable community." I am pleased to announce that on December 7, AARP Maine announced that Age Friendly Saco was the recipient of the 2021 First Beacon Community Award. So, congratulations to the Age Friendly Saco team led by Gene Saunders for their continued excellent work. And then the last committee, we did meet with the Bitterford-Saco Orchard Beach Transit Committee on December 9. Just a couple of updates there. Newly hired Executive Director Chad Hyde continues to work hard with his transit team and the Transit Committee to improve various aspects of the organization, including, but not limited to, entity governance and financial management. Additionally, while transit routes continue to be monitored, evaluated, and adjusted, ridership is slowly moving back towards pre-pandemic levels. A reduced fare program is tentatively being considered for the first quarter of the calendar year 2022 as an incentive to draw more users into the transit system, so you want to be on the lookout for that. And finally, grant funding for a variety of transit improvement initiatives continues to be aggressively pursued by the Transit's administrative staff, an effort that I have become very keen to and appreciative of on behalf of that committee. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further Committee Correspondents to Council? Moving on to item six of the agenda, and that is public comment. We have a couple of folks that have signed up. First up is Brett Messer. Those coming to the microphone, please feel free to unmask if you'd like, speak directly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Brett Messer. Business is located at 27 Industrial Park Road in Saco. I'm in the medical cannabis business. This will be our 10th year in business. We're one of the largest private employers in the city of Saco. We employ about 40 people. I was one of the first commercial cultivators in the state of Maine, Saco having been one of the first approved caregiver commercial cultivation facilities. The cannabis industry is a good industry for a number of reasons. You know, there's new and clearly defined health benefits. It's also good for business as well. Our salaries are very fair and competitive. We offer full benefits. We have entry-level positions available. I wanted to come today to chat about a couple of the things that I saw in the new ordinance and to make myself a resource for Council, as I feel a lot of times there is some expertise needed on these matters, and it's just not. From what I can tell, there seems to be some confusion in almost every time the city has addressed these types of things. So, a couple of things I noticed, you know, currently there's a limit on testing and manufacturing facilities. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Those businesses, again, are good businesses with good salaries for employees. They're safe. It also offers diversity for businesses. The price of raw cannabis continues to fall, so business owners that are seeking to diversify their business and do something other than just cultivate cannabis. Additionally, 50% of all cannabis products sold are manufactured from cannabis, not the cannabis itself. Another note is on registered dispensaries. It looks like you guys addressed a couple of changes from the previous reading to this one. The limit of one didn't really seem to make a lot of sense. Maybe if that was like a retail thing, perhaps. I would like to note, an opt-in for a registered medical dispensary does not also mean an opt-in for any other type of license type. And so recently, the state has updated its laws this past year to allow for unlimited medical dispensaries versus the previous limit of eight that we had, and that is a new license type. It allows somebody like myself to adapt my business to the changed market conditions over the last 10 years. There's a lot more state oversight in the dispensary license versus a caregiver license, which I believe should appeal to the city, so the city doesn't feel like it has a burden to be, you know, checking on compliance and matters like that. So, another one, I think you guys had already addressed this, is the electronic sales issue using debit cards, credit cards. That's just not possible in the cannabis industry due to federal law. The biggest issue is plant count, so currently caregivers are registered, are allowed a very low plant count. That makes for a very inefficient style of growing. It's not efficient with resources like water or nutrients. It's not efficient for just the cultivation in general. So, a lot of positive changes with the dispensary license, and I think you'll see across the state, a lot of the larger caregiver operations like myself converting over to that medical dispensary license. I would like to point out, commercial caregiver facilities such as mine, a medical dispensary cultivation, or adult-use recreational cultivation, those facilities are all nearly identical. The way the plants are grown is identical. The plants themselves are identical, so we're just talking about a difference of nomenclature here. One note I would like to make on adult use, or two notes, rather. One is that the city of Saco citizens did overwhelmingly pass adult use when it was voted. Our city was about 58% in favor. Additionally, cannabis laws should never be more restrictive than the laws of alcohol. Alcohol takes lives every single day, and cannabis does not, so, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Up next is Dana Vila.
Good evening, members of the Council. Mr. Mayor, I'm Dana Vila, 172 Houndav, and I'd like to follow up on my colleague's last comments and reiterate that the changes that you all are examining with regard to Chapter 168 tonight, they don't just relate to the cultivation and sale of marijuana. They relate to the personal lives of members of the community, such as myself, and him, and all of his employees, and this represents the ability to develop economic opportunities for people in the city of Saco. There's a human element to this that I'm sure you all are aware of or have considered, but please know that we are thankful for your time in addressing these matters, and we look forward to your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for those that have signed up. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak that did not sign up, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody coming forward, moving on to item seven of the agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes for December 6, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item eight of the agenda, consent items. We have three items. Item A, approve the January meeting dates. Item B, cancel the December 20 meeting date. And item C, confirm mayor's appointment to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of Christopher Yanni. Is there any councilor willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I think Councilor Archer, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Berman, any discussion on the consent items? Roll call vote on the consent items. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item nine, action items. First up is item A, a final reading proposed Chapter 168, Life Safety, Recreational and Medical Marijuana Dispensing Sales and Operations, page six in your packet, and that is Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city planning board recently conditionally approved a medical marijuana registered dispensary. The city's prior life safety ordinance, Chapter 165, which regulated marijuana use, expired by its own terms. This circumstance leaves the city without adequate life safety regulations concerning certain marijuana uses, including registered dispensaries. The city is contemplating passage of an emergency ordinance. Regulating marijuana use by an emergency ordinance will only run for 61 days. Therefore, the city needs to start the review process and possible enactment of permanent regulation to replace the prior Chapter 165 that will regulate marijuana for public protection and safety. Staff have drafted a proposal, final version, of a comprehensive regulatory program for marijuana use. City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the second and final reading of the proposed final chapter, 168, Life Safety, Recreational and Medical Marijuana Dispensing Sales and
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Discussion? Councilor Berman, then Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned about several sections of this ordinance that both permit but simultaneously significantly restrict the ability of medical marijuana facilities to do business in the city. I want to make a series of amendments, most of which were sent around earlier today by the city administrator, and one additional one that was not. The first one is found in Section 168.3B on page seven of our packet that refers to caregiver and other retail sales. Given the similar mission of registered dispensaries and medical marijuana retail establishments, I would like this section to apply only to adult-use recreational marijuana retail. Therefore, I move to strike the words caregiver and other from the first sentence and replace it with adult-use recreational, and I move to strike the words including caregiver retail sales from the second sentence, the second line. Those two changes would make this section apply only to adult-use or recreational retail
So, Section 168, item dash three, retail stores, marijuana testing facilities, and marijuana manufacturing facilities. On page seven, you'd like to strike item B, and that remove the word, remove caregiver and other? And other? Replace it with adult-use recreational. And then in the second line, just strike the words including caregiver retail stores. Amendment's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion on the amendment? And that's to remove caregiver and the word other and replace with adult-use recreational, and then remove the second sentence related to caregiver retail stores. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I guess, without having reread everything right now, it would seem that this runs counter to what our legal counsel had suggested in a memo. I could be wrong, but that's what I recall. So, I'm just seeking clarity for that.
Would you like to hear from the city planner, Jason Garnum, or perhaps city solicitor, Tim Murphy?
I would prefer the city solicitor to weigh in as to what type of impact that is.
City Solicitor Murphy, would you be willing to come to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. How can I help?
Councilor Johnston, do you want to ask city solicitor Murphy the question about this amendment that's been proposed by Councilor Berman runs counter, or parallel, or, excuse me, counter to what we were previously told?
Yeah, I think you just summarized it. I mean, I guess Councilor Berman could repeat what the amendment was, and perhaps Attorney Murphy could. Murphy could, on the fly, I guess, wrap his opinion around this.
I understood the proposed changes. I didn't know specifically what you're asking about, Counselor.
I was specifically asking about the memo that we received in the packet, and I thought that was, I guess, against your suggestion about removing that terminology. Only because laws change and what have you.
Yeah. Presently, there is no defined use for caregiver retail in the zoning ordinance. I've sent this around in a memo recently. But ultimately, it's a policy call for all of you. It's not a legal impediment. The initial draft of this followed what historically had been the city's decision to support, as Mr. Messer testified, to the long history of growing operations in the city, which have been here for quite a while, to continue that, and to also, with your recent zoning changes, to allow registered dispensaries. That was the direction that historically the council had chosen to go. Historically, the council has always opposed retail sales. There hasn't been retail sales of marijuana in the city. There's only one location that currently allows retail sales, and that was a historical oddity because the site location where it's found, the Haza Building on the Industrial Park Road, had always allowed retail sales there. So Dick Lambert at the time felt that retail sales could be allowed at that spot as an accessory use. In retrospect, that may not have been the correct conclusion, but it was the one we reached at the time. And so that, I believe, is the one location in the city where you'll see recreational sales of marijuana. But as of now, there is no recreational, I mean, excuse me, retail sales. There's growing, and there will now be registered dispensaries, but we do not have retail in the city for either adult use or medical. That may change with dispensaries now. But again, a policy call for all of you. It's not a legal impediment.
And so-
There is a defined term of caregiver retail store, correct? And that's something we would have to opt into?
Yeah. So even if you enact Section 168 tonight, we don't have in our zoning ordinance the defined use of caregiver retail store. So you could pass 168 with these amendments, and then the planning board on its own can determine when and where it feels the use is appropriately placed. Looking at the statutes on registered dispensaries and caregiver retail stores, the impression I got was that dispensaries are going to be very regulated by the state, and that's what some of the testimony we heard earlier. Caregiver retail stores, from what I understand and can deduce out of the statute, is that they're going to be much more, excuse me, much less regulated. A caregiver who's growing plants in their home or in another location can throw up a storefront and sell their product. And so it's not going to be nearly as regulated as dispensaries. We need to be mindful of where we zone these because are you simultaneously allowing the caregivers to sell in residential zones? Well, I don't think that's intended, but these are the things the planning board will need to address if in fact you make these enactments. The overall structure that we gave you was one where you've opted in, so the state statute allows you to opt in or opt out of four categories. The one you voted on in zoning was registered dispensaries. We took that to mean the other three categories, manufacturing, testing, and caregiver retail or retail in general, you were not interested in. Historically, the council hasn't been. That can change over time because new people come on board. So those become new decisions for all of you. But that is why the structure got put in the way it was.
Which is also on the agenda here under new business, Item A.
All right. Thank you. I think from my perspective, having spent a significant amount of hours reading ordinances from all surrounding communities throughout the state, about 10 in total, and this being new to the City of Saco, I kind of appreciate hearing on the side of caution, as the city attorney has suggested, in leaving that in here or in place for now until we move forward with whatever changes we may feel is appropriate later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? We'll come back. Counselor McPhail?
I just want to clarify is, the amendment that we're discussing now, have all amendments been proposed in, or just do we-
No. Or on the First Amendment.
Just the First. They're going to be done individually. Okay, thank you.
And it's the one that was not read on the document that Counselor Berman sent in earlier that was distributed to council. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's actually not a question for our attorney, but more of a statement. While I'm for this amendment, because it discludes caregiver retail stores, I also think that, I believe that in some areas zoning should allow this, and it should not be a blanket prohibition throughout the whole city, but should be a targeted approach to where it can be. I'm for this amendment, but not overall for the whole thing, only because I see this as partially meeting my own vision by allowing caregivers, but I'm also more interested in the sense of not necessarily the no to retail sales, but the where is where I'm interested.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you. City Solicitor, my intent with striking this language is not to opt in to caregiver retail stores necessarily, but merely to remove one impediment should we choose to opt in in the future. Am I correct that simply by not explicitly excluding them here, we are still not yet opting in?
No. It would create some ambiguity. So the way we could resolve that is we could accept your amendments, but put some other language in that specifically says, this is not the opt-in decision. So there's a way to solve that problem. And if I could just address Counselor Archer's point, just so there's no confusion, the city has an ordinance in place right now, Section 135, that completely allows caregivers. We already have caregivers throughout the city. This is a different topic. This is a caregiver store. So there is no legal impediment in the City of Saco right now for caregivers. In fact, we have substantial numbers of them. So I got the inference from your question that they're not allowed. And in fact, they are. They can get a business license, they can grow, but these are much, much smaller operations than what you might see out in the industrial park. And Counselor, yes, we can solve that problem if that's your goal. Sure.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. Well, I don't know. I mean, I had sent in the correspondence through the administrator earlier to yourself. I don't know if you got it in time. But since you just brought up Chapter 135, the question I had after reviewing all these different ordinances today was, at least the way I was interpreting it, it would appear that Chapter 135 expired. It was an emergency ordinance that we-
No, that's Chapter 165.
No, that's Chapter 135. If you pull it up on the E-code, it states in the initial findings that it was a emergency 60-day emergency. So-
I thought that was still in effect.
Again, I brought this up several weeks ago because I saw it then, and perhaps what's online is wrong. I don't know, but I don't really remember. I remember enacting it in 2017, but I don't remember making it a permanent part of code. But we did at some point in 2019 make some changes to it. So again, the question I had, and again, I don't know if you had seen it, but you make references in this new chapter to that old chapter, and I just wanted to make sure that it is a factual enacted chapter, because otherwise we're referencing code that's not in, on the books.
Counselor, I did not see your memo. I had to leave work early today, take my daughter to an orthodontist appointment. Believe me, I would have preferred to be in the office. But we've had two ordinances governing marijuana. Perhaps the number's 132, but, so I'm going off memory. One of them, I believe, is still in effect.
One of them's recreational. I mean, I was on this council when we passed these. I have a good memory.
And one of them expired.
135 was an emergency ordinance that came to council because we were concerned about the growing that was occurring in unregulated areas. That's the one that's referenced in this new chapter that governs growing of marijuana, caregivers, whatnot. I believe that code is expired. Chapter 165 is the recreational, like opt-out, I guess is what we call it. We didn't opt in to anything. The law had just been passed, and we were concerned about, I guess it's a moratorium going forward until we had actually adopted recreational laws. That one's still on the books, but-
Yeah, one of the two, I thought, is still in effect. I'll circle back to that.
I just have concerns that we're going to adopt an ordinance tonight that makes reference to a chapter that may not actually be on the books.
We'll double-check that, make sure.
Thank you. Any further questions on the amendment only? On the amendment only. Roll call vote on the amendment. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston? Motion passes 5-2 on the amendment. On the next amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three other amendments. These were sent around by the city administrator earlier. The next one is found on Page 8, Section 168-4A, registered dispensaries. This has to do with the number of potential dispensaries. I wish to strike the end of that paragraph, starting with the words notwithstanding through the end of the section, with the intent of allowing more than one registered dispensary per zoning area.
Counsel on Page 8 in the packet, what you'll see is, or excuse me, on Page 2 of the document that Counsel Berman sent over, Section 168-4, 168-4, Item A, and it's removing the last two sentences in that paragraph, which would essentially remove the limitation on the dispensary in the zone. Motion's been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Archer. Discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think while I support more than one, it seems a bit restrictive. I do know that we have roughly six, maybe seven, current marijuana-related businesses in the industrial park. And given that we just, with the previous zoning change, expanded the areas to two new additional zones, being what previously was the I-3 or the Millbrook area and, you know, the B-8 previously, which was across from the DPW garage, or former DPW garage. You know, we're opening up that zone to, you know, again, however you feel about the use, it's just not very diversified, which we generally typically in the past have tried to have our industrial parks be. So like I said, I can support removing the one, but I think I'd be more in favor of, say, three in each zone, so that would be an additional six permitted establishments in the city. I think that seems fair at this stage, since we don't really know how this is all going to unfold. And again, given what I currently see in the industrial park, it seems in some ways that, you know, we're tending to become a mecca for this use, and that's not really, in my opinion, the best use of the land out there. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. I actually agree with Counselor Johnston was going to bring up that point and put a recommendation of three, at least until the time being that we have a full ordinance. Again, I would hate to see a saturation, you know, an immediate onset of rushing or us having a little more control in still learning and getting this ordinance completely done correctly. So I would like to make an amendment to change the one to three registered dispensaries per each zone until the time of the new ordinance.
Counselor McPhail has made an amendment to the amendment, and that is to... Would the council be willing to take up the amendment first, and then you can add in a motion to add in three instead of doing amendment upon amendment? It's going to get quite confusing for not only us up here, but the folks at home, and I'd rather go slow and steady here, but we have the time. So with that, we'll just deal with the First Amendment, and that is Counselor Berman's removing the last two sentences. Counsel Archer had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can actually connect my question to the proposed next amendment, so I'm fine with wrapping up Counselor Berman's, and then I'd like to interject with the proposed next amendment with the limitations of businesses.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Berman?
Just to note that I also don't favor unlimited numbers of registered dispensaries. But in fact, with conditional use approval for registered dispensaries in these zones, it is not necessarily unlimited. It's that the planning board will assess each project as they come, weigh it against the needs of the city, the neighborhoods, the competition, as well as the, you know, other factors that may go into the appropriateness of any particular project in that location. Any given arbitrary number we set is going to privilege first come, first serve, the people that apply in a rush. And then that becomes limited and sets a non-competitive framework for these registered dispensaries. In addition, without understanding what the competitive business atmosphere will be, what the public's needs are, and, you know, how all this is going to shake out, all we're doing is privileging those who are watching this meeting and are the first to apply. I prefer, given the conditional approval as opposed to blanket approval, letting the planning board take each one as they come and weigh it against the needs of the city at that moment.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the removal of the last two sentences in 168-4, subsection Okay. Hearing no more discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes, the amendment passes 5-2.
I don't know if Counselor McPhail wanted to make an amendment to that same section.
Counselor McPhail, do you still wish to make the amendment to add in similar language with the exception of a number of three instead of the number one?
Yes, so I would like to make an amendment to put the paragraph, starting with notwithstanding the proceeding, changing one dispensary to three.
I'll second that.
Bear with me as I'm writing. Thank you. That motion was made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Hatch, to add in essentially the same language, but removing the word one and the number one, and adding in the word three and the number three. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be most likely to staff as they would consider them the local experts. When we talk about this, do we have any other businesses that expressly, we expressly limit their operations and how many we provide? When I think about these current discussions, I believe they mirror our 1920s, 1929s prohibition So if we start to limit certain businesses, and we don't, I have initial concerns from that. I do like Counselor Burnham's, where we just make it all conditional, to be honest. I do like Counsel Berman's, where we just make it all conditional, to be honest. It allows for the decision to be made in the moment, rather than a blanket-wide policy in which, yes, we would be favoring those who already have licenses. So my question is, actually, do we have other businesses in which we limit how many operate? The one that comes to mind specifically, and the one that most mirrors it, is alcohol. Do we limit the amount of breweries, distilleries, and/or just bars or restaurants, and things of that nature? Because, again, the recreational side of marijuana, based on the legality of it at the state, mimics that of the alcohol industry. This is where I have concerns, is if we start just arbitrarily limiting when we don't do it to other businesses. Couple weeks ago, when this measure was on the floor, again, I had concerns about creating cash-only transactions, which do not apply to other businesses, and the hours, the ones that we created, necessarily, we can discuss what those hours are, but what we had, again, I just don't want to be arbitrarily or targeting a certain profession. Again, I do believe there's the proper locations, but the limitations that we place, I just do not think are fair in this fair market world we live in. I mean, that's my initial concern, is are we treating a certain industry disproportionately than that of another one? Again, I do believe in locations, definitely not near a school. I do believe that we need to have additional regulations. However, this, as written, is a very blanketed approach, and I disagree with that. So do we limit industry-specific licenses and things to that nature? And I believe that's our local expert, probably zoning, or to that nature. And, again, the other person I would think that I could go to, our other local expert, Wanda, she took off, because she was around during that timeframe. We honored her earlier today, so she did take off, so I can't ask her what the 1920s and 30s looked like. But I do mirror our discussions to 90 years ago. So, thank you.
Code enforcement officer Toomey, and city planner Garnum, would you kindly come up to the podium, please? Thank you very much. You heard Counsel Archer's questions. Do we currently regulate any other business, per se, in their operations?
Nothing comes to my mind at right off. More or less limited some by where they're allowed, so it limits their number. Yeah. But if they're going to comply, we don't say we have 15, we don't do that. We don't say if you have a non-traffic, or if you're not aware of it. Bar, now we would say there's no space for a supermarket, but that's only if you're not involved. Correct.
I would add, we don't do that, though, with, in the case of marijuana businesses, you have the authority to do so. One of the very small reasons to weigh whether or not to do that is it does pose a sort of a tracking challenge, which with a limited number of businesses, may not be extremely difficult, but as my personal example of, people come and go, the relative knowledge base that steers the community and makes decisions changes over time, and staff can't always know.
But that barrier is not applied to any other area?
Not that I'm aware of.
City planner Garnum, is it, in your years of experience in planning, may not be here, but is this issue common amongst other communities because of the simple nature of marijuana is federally illegal, yet state by state, it's allowed in different locales? So is that the reason why there's certain regulations maybe on this industry versus industries, other industries?
Absolutely. This, as everyone who is sitting before me, and Dave and myself, can all remember a time not long ago, when this conversation in and of itself was absolutely inconceivable. So regardless of the actual impacts that these business types may have on your community, this is a very controversial and contentious issue, and based on my limited understanding of laws that have been passed in various states around the country, recognizing the sensitive nature of this, many of those enabling statutes do allow municipalities to very tightly control the number and location of marijuana businesses. So it's not unusual to contemplate limiting the number of them, requiring minimum spacing between those businesses and other marijuana businesses, or marijuana businesses and other community uses. These are, you know, I don't think Maine was the first state to pass these laws, and I'm sure they were looking to some of the other states when they devised some of these regulations, understanding that those are what were palatable to the voters and to the municipalities in other locales.
So it's different than supermarkets, or other nature, or even a bar?
Yes. I think the strongest parallel that I would draw would be to cell phone towers. Many communities still, oh, billboards is another one, where many communities do, you know, it shifts over time with, as court cases change what's permitted, and, you know, as the federal legislation evolves, but many communities also very strictly regulate those uses because they either are, have undesirable qualities, or, in the case of wireless telecommunication facilities, they were, just as marijuana uses are today, they were not that long ago, very controversial, and got people very excited when they were coming along. And so the rules that were enabled and adopted in thousands of municipalities across the country, in many cases, still have those very fine-grained regulations that apply to them, you know, distancing requirements, limiting the number of carriers who can use certain facilities, so on and so on. And I, obviously, cell towers are very different from caregiver grow operation, but, you know, the attitudes toward those as new, never-before-seen uses are kind of similar.
Counsel Archer, did that answer your question?
It did.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. City planner just pretty much summarized what I was going to say, but, yeah, in the history of the city of Saco, we have limited cell towers in particular, and I believe it was wind generation, when, you know, wind turbines came about. So it's certainly not something that, you know, is common, but I would say with a new use and uncharted territory, you know, it's acceptable, at least in my opinion. But I would also add that just overall zoning is restrictive, and that's, you know, a little different, but at the same time, we've, throughout the history of the city, zoned very small zones, just to, you know, ensure that that particular use is only in that area, which by itself limits what can actually locate there. So I can understand, you know, some reservations, but again, I think that so early in the process here, that it, I'd much rather see us be cautious with this. I think we have already had examples where, you know, as I said several weeks ago, I, in particular, I don't know about the rest of you, but I felt caught with my pants down on this subject matter, and so if the goal here is to clean this up and make this as, you know, cut and dry as possible, I think that erring on the side of caution, we'll see how it goes, and we can always amend things later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? Counsel McPhail?
Yep, just to clarify my reasoning behind that, is this is a temporary ordinance until we have the full ordinance? And again, erring on the side of caution, until we can actually get true discussions opened up through a draft ordinance going forward, that's the reason I'm putting this forward. Not that it's going to be permanent, it can change, up for amendment, up for discussion, but until we start those actual discussions on our new, what will be the permanent ordinance, I feel that I'm erring on the side of caution to be limiting at this point in time.
Any further questions? Counselor McPhail, I don't believe that this is a temporary ordinance. I think this is a proposed final chapter 168, life safety. The previous emergency ordinance that was brought forward with this failed and died.
But once we have the true, once we have the new marijuana ordinance completed, it will replace...
It could replace sections with zoning and so forth, but this is codes, this is not planning. This is code enforcement officer, this is what they're going to look for when they go out and inspect businesses and so forth, and when businesses come in for plan, excuse me, for permits, this is the, this is the document they're going to use to look at before it even gets to planning, and whether a conditional use is allowed or not.
Right, okay.
Counsel Archer?
Yeah, I was just going to actually say the same thing as the mayor did, is this will be the law of the land, so we have to get it done correctly this time. And again, amendments in the future can happen, but this will be the law of the land.
So all I would add is, again, reviewing about 10 different ordinances this weekend, every single one of them had a limit, that I read. I'm not saying that there isn't a community that doesn't have a limit, but every one that I found had a limitation as to how many were allowed. Thank you.
City planner Garnum, in your, in your research, as we'll hear from later on tonight under New Business, in your research about the different areas of marijuana in the state of Maine, have you found a limit that communities have found, have kind of consensed around for these dispensaries?
I don't know offhand if I could state that there's a number that I've seen commonly, but, you know, I have looked at more than a handful of recently adopted zoning ordinances, especially relating to adult use recreational marijuana, and certainly, many of them have it, along with very detailed licensing requirements and performance standards for security, and in some cases, training provided to the staff, and so on and so on, so...
Code enforcement officer Toomey, in your experience, vast experience here in Saco and in the state of Maine, as you're looking through these, have you found any consensus around a number for dispensaries that the council may want to consider this evening?
Not a specific number, no.
Thank you. Counsel Berman?
Just also to point out that the language as proposed wouldn't limit the number of registered dispensaries in the city, it would limit the number per zone they're approved in. The industrial zone is a big zone. We could also maybe imagine these somewhere along the Portland Road Zone, which is also a big zone, or maybe someday in the business industrial zone, which is a small zone. As we add different zones to the approval process, if someday we do a rezoning, which breaks up these large zones into smaller zones, that would also change the number of registered dispensaries automatically if we pass language setting the number of dispensaries per zone. I think, if we think there should be a number for the city, we should make it for the city, and not per approved zone. However, again, with a conditional use, we can leave those decisions up to the planning board to prove as they come, not setting up that potential time bomb.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I can respect that opinion of, you know, conditional use, but as I said several weeks ago, conditional use is not an outright denial, as long as you meet those standards. It's not a contract zone where you can say, "We don't want that use." So just saying, "Oh, we're going to leave it to conditional use," really does not have, you know, there's additional standards that somebody by right would have, wouldn't have to apply or meet, but conditional use permit, it's pretty plain language, the way I read it in the zoning ordinance, it's, you know, it's very similar to site plan language. So it's not something I view as restrictive, it's more of an extra step. So I just would caution us with that thought, that, hey, it's conditional, planning board can deny it. Not outright, they can't, just because they don't like it, and if they do, we'll probably end up in a legal battle. Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
I would agree with that statement. I've been listening to this, seems like a reliance on a conditional use to allow the planning board to make a decision about whether, how many of these we need in the city, and I don't think that's appropriate, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we could argue, and this is my own industry, so I'll pick on it, when we found out that they were putting a bank where the donut shop was, the comment was, "We don't need another bank, but we're getting another bank," because the planning board is simply going to look at the uses and allowances there. So they're not going to be able to restrict the number of these, these facilities, so I just want to agree with Counsel Johnson's assessment there.
Any further discussion on the amendment, on Counsel McPhail's amendment only? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote on the amendment only. Counsel Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion fails three to four, the amendment. Counsel Berman, you have a couple of other amendments?
I think City Solicitor Murphy is trying to speak.
Yeah, City Solicitor Murphy?
Counselor, thank you. I had an opportunity to consult with the clerk regarding Counsel Johnson's inquiry, and I just wanted to bring back to you the information that we were able to verify. Section 135 was passed in regular order. It had some legacy verbiage in it that used the word "emergency." However, it was enacted by the council in regular order, therefore, it's currently the binding law of the city. It is in effect, it regulates caregivers, requires business licensing for marijuana uses. Chapter 165 did expire, so you're correct about that. That's no longer in effect. That's partly why section 168 is coming to you. Your question about the interior references to one, chapter 135, were wise to raise, because the ordinance does appear, because of that legacy verbiage, there is the word "emergency." However, we did confirm it was passed in regular order. So the verbiage you see in proposed 168 would be, would be acceptable. It would not cause a problem.
Thank you, City Solicitor.
And I wanted to add that extra information, so you understood. Thank you.
Thank you, City Solicitor Murphy. Counsel Berman?
Thank you. I have two more amendments I would like to make. I appreciate the council's patience. Next one is also found on page eight of our packet, under section 168-4, now subsection B, two hours of business or operation, currently reads from 8:00 a.m. and must end by 5:00 p.m. I wish to strike that and turn it into 8:00 p.m. I also wish to strike the second sentence it may not operate on through the end of the sentence.
Second.
The amendment's been made by Counsel Berman, second by Counsel Archer, to amend page eight, 168-4, item two, and remove the number five and add in the number eight, and then remove the last sentence. Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment? Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven-zero. Counsel Berman?
Thank you. Last one, Mr. Mayor. In that same section, but now number seven, I wish to strike it in its, completely, removing all sales being done electronically via credit debit or some electronic payment methods, strike the section.
Second.
The amendment to strike section 168-4B7 has been made by Counsel Berman, second by Counsel Archer. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven-zero. Back to the main motion now as amended. Now as amended four times. Any further amendments? Counsel Archer?
I have potentially several, but if the city solicitor and potentially the city planner could come up just to make sure my amendments are, are okay, are acceptable.
City Planner Garnum and City Solicitor Murphy, can you please come back to the podium? Thank you.
The first one's relatively easy. Under that same section of, of B, other limitations and conditions, it presently has, it shall be subject to routine inspection on a semi-annual basis. I'd like to strike semi and make it annual.
There's no legal impediment one way or the other. You're totally free on that call.
Motion's been made by, the amendment's been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Archer to remove the word semi and, under section 168 four B three, and just make it an annual basis by the city departments. Any discussion? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one's for staff. Recognizing that inspections are point in time, I guess, is there any concern that it goes from semi to annual? Recognizing an inspection is point in time as seen in the moment.
Code enforcement officer Toomey, would you come forward, please?
Would, is there actual, any actual concern going from semi to annual?
No.
Okay, thank you.
My manpower probably is better for annual.
Any further discussion? Code enforcement officer Toomey, in your opinion, with this new life safety and the fact that we are moving slowly and this is new, would it be wise for the council, in your expert opinion, to do it more than an annual, annual basis?
I would say start at an annual, and if we're finding a lot of problems, we can come back and say that this isn't working, but I think annual will work for the beginning of this process.
Thank you. Any further questions on the amendment? On the amendment only, roll call vote on the amendment only. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven zero. Counselor Johnston, do you have another amendment?
Again, under that same section, and if, if this doesn't belong in this section, you can, the city solicitor can correct me where these amendments belong. So six, where it speaks to schools, I'd like to strike that entire language and replace it with a registered dispensary may not be located on property within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public or private pre-K through 12 school. For the purpose of this ordinance, school includes a public school, private school or public preschool program as defined in 20A MRSA Section One, or any other educational facility that serves children from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. Additionally, no sign or other advertisement may be displayed within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public or private school pre-K through 12.
Counselor Johnston, I could not write as fast. Could you pass that forward and?
So let me make, and we might all want to chime in on this one. The industrial park has both the Margaret Murphy School, which would be a private school. We also now have the Toddlin, which is a pre-K in the industrial park zone. So the language was tailored to find a way to not have to fit or cause those buildings to be impediments to the placement of dispensaries. So that's why it was tailored only to elementary schools and secondary schools. If you want to be more restrictive, that's up to the wisdom of the council, but it was drafted to not be highly restrictive because of the Margaret Murphy School and Toddlin. So we, we pulled the definition in. Again, policy calls for all of you, but that's why there's a distinction, Counselor, is because of those two.
I understand that. I, I would agree, and obviously I'm trying to be more restrictive, but that's based off feedback, feedback I've received over the last several weeks from members of the community. I, I think that in particular, Toddlin was, was highlighted by, by several to me, that we were excluding them and that they didn't want that use there. So that's why I'm offering this to council.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston to amend item 168 dash four B six and remove the language and add, "A registered dispensary may not be located on property within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public or private school pre-K through 12. For the purposes of this ordinance, school includes a public school, private school or public preschool program as defined in 20A MRSA subsection one, or any other educational facility that serves children from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. Additionally, no sign or other advertisement may be displayed within 1,000 feet of the property line of a public or private school." Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to highlight my, my ignorance here. How much, where would that leave for a registered dispensary to exist? Is there anybody who has a, a better sense of what that 1,000 feet looks like than I do?
They're currently only allowed in I and BI zoning districts, and I don't know how many schools are operating in or near those zoning districts. Perhaps someone who knows the city better could, could say.
Just the two schools that he had mentioned, the Margaret School, Murphy School and the Toddlin at this point.
If you drew a thousand-foot circle around those property lines, how much of the I or BI zones are left?
Well, we have a caregiver within 500 feet of the Murphy School, so they grandfathered, so they would not be allowed to do a dispensary at that location if you follow this. They'd be tied up to only do growing.
But is there, is there, are there places in the I and BI zones that are not within 1,000 feet of a school?
Yes, but right now our medical marijuana givers are only allowed in the I zone, but they're also restricted by covenants and federal rules, so they're really only on Industrial Park Road.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, this is discussion. While I think this amendment could be beneficial, however, I am currently trying to, I think Counselor Burnham's on the same question, is I'm trying to visualize almost like a Venn diagram in my head of every location this would apply to, and without actually having any concrete information, I can't support this amendment without having actually the facts, because I don't know what the radi for every business nonprofit profit that this would apply to. So I can't support that just based on, I don't have the information to, for nor against.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I mean, I would just add that the current language as proposed is 1,000 feet from any city public elementary or secondary school. Do you have an idea of what 1,000 feet from Fairfield School is?
From?
Right now, presently, as you sit here?
To answer that in the affirmative would not be correct. However, I do have a general understanding from three points within the city. When you put 20 points on a grid, then I, it becomes very blurry and I cannot support it with, and I say 20, that's arbitrary. I don't know how many this would apply to, but the context is, the content is that I can't, from three locations, it's easier to understand. From 20, it becomes more blurry. 20 could potentially just knock out all of downtown. Like, and when I say downtown, like greater density area of Saco.
Code enforcement officer Toomey, would you say in your opinion that we are 1,000 feet from Fairfield School here, or are we less than 1,000 feet?
The planning board had discussion on this, and it was 500 feet and 1,000 feet, and I can't remember which one we were. I believe we were 500.
We are 500 feet.
It's like 600 to next door, because they looked at the dance school next door, so I think it was 640 for there.
From Fairfield School. Does that help the council in a comparison of what, what it might look like?
I would just, I would just add that, again, I go back to the zoning actions we took, where we took two zones that previously didn't allow this use, and we've added them. So there's available land as of right now that used to not be allowed. And so, yes, you might be, you know, preempting a, a section of, you know, the industrial park or what used to be the, the I-1, but there's schools there now, there's uses there now that are grandfathered, so we're just talking about not adding additional uses around some of those schooling locations that are presently in the industrial park. Lund Road, I don't, I don't believe there's a school over in that area, so it would be, you know, applicable there, and it could, if, if they were to, I mean, maybe this isn't realistic, but, you know, if they were to locate into the Ramada section, they'd be allowed there, and, and of course, Millbrook is, would be open for this use too. Again, I, I, I thought about the distance. I went with what was in here. I found that just about every ordinance I read had a, a pretty sizable distance from schools, and, and again, this is based on feedback I've received from current parents of, you know, school-aged children in the industrial park that have been honestly alarmed to find out some of those uses are currently there. So this is just trying to prevent, you know, the expansion of these uses in those areas. Thank you.
City Planner Garnum, code enforcement officer Toomey, in your research as part of this, you know, foray into marijuana, did you find any recommendation for a specific amount of, of distance between a school and a miracle, and a marijuana dispenser?
Yeah, I believe the state law specifies a minimum of 500 feet between these registered businesses and certain schools, but I didn't see a whole lot prescribing extra distance requirements, but I did see a lot of separation requirements in the, in the other ordinances I looked at, such as 1,000 feet between, you know, marijuana businesses. So, you know, adding a sort of standard for applicants to address when they apply for a business license or site plan approval.
Any further questions, Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the attorney, because it just wants some clarification. I'm not trying to pull a President Clinton, I'm trying to find what is-is, but what does?
I'm not either, Counselor.
What I'm trying to ask is, what does it mean when we talk about public school? And I use this specific example, I guess, to help to define, is when we had to go to the church and create public school space due to COVID and related, we, we know that, does that then automatically, that building itself becomes public school? Or is it not considered?
It would be for that limited time period that schools were operating there, but you're never going to be, I mean, schools are historically long-term fixed places.
That's correct.
So I, I think.
I didn't want to define what is-is, but in this specific case.
But bear in mind, once someone's located, if you, as the schools, need to then move nearby as an emergency or to measure, you can. That will not affect the grandfathered registered dispensary. They'll be okay.
Okay.
The goal, the, the question that drove this was, do you want to add in the Toddlin? And so you can, you can tweak this, or you can leave it as-is, or you can expand it. Those are all policy calls for you. But, but out in the I zones, we were, we had these two existing schools. One is totally private, Margaret Murphy, and then there's Toddlin. So it's up to you as the council to decide, do you want to set a buffer from them or just not? It's completely your call.
So we're saying pre-K is not public at this time? Not considered a public?
It, it would be, but.
Because we say.
The definition is not public.
Elementary, public elementary. Pre-K does not fall under elementary?
So yeah, that was a way to carve out the Toddlin, because if you left it in, you were going to draw that big 1,000-foot circle, and who knows how many properties are in it? So we tried to err on the side of caution. Again, your call. We were giving you a starting point. You decide as policy objectives what you think are right.
I was just looking, as written, what is the?
It would not include Toddlin or Margaret Murphy. They are outside the definition.
City Solicitor Murphy, without any extension, how many years is left on the Toddlin lease? Is it three?
Good question. I think we're three and a half maybe at this point, Mayor.
We've taken a two-year break from that, yeah.
It's, yeah, I don't think it's been a full two years. Brian, how long, you?
Three years, is that right?
Yeah, three years, okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. They just touched on what I was going to bring up. I mean, to, to keep it all in, in perspective, as far as distance from Toddlin, this is, that is a temporary situation. And, yeah, could be three years, could be six, depending on whether we do an extension or not, but that, that is a temporary situation. Thank you.
City Solicitor Murphy, can you look into, one thing that was brought up at the school board meeting last week is, there was talk about the Toddlin lease. Can you look into the lease and remind us if it's not right now, but?
I'll have it for you tomorrow. What, what its expiration date is?
The expiration and the renewals. If it's a three-year renewal, or if you can renew it year to year, I'd want to look at that.
My, my memory is that the settlement agreement requires a council sign-off on any extension, so. So I will have you through the city administrator's office, I'll have that answer for you by nine tomorrow.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Berman. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I, I guess, like, again, I can understand, you know, where, where people are coming from here, but, and, and for me personally, this really doesn't make a difference to me. As I've said, this is a reflection of what I have heard from parents, and so I guess I would, you know, pose a question to council, if, if the concern here is children under the age of 18, why are we segregating a certain element and saying, hey, these younger kids, they don't, I guess, fall in line? So to me, it's like, just do it all grade levels. If that's our intent and our concern, then address that, or don't address it at all. Don't be restrictive to, you know, elementary-aged up to Thornton Academy-age students, and then leave out the pre-K program or, or private schooling. So, yeah, I guess that's what I'd leave you with. You know, it's one or the other in my mind. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Thank you. I appreciate what Counselor Johnston just said and what he's trying to do. I think the competing interest is, is to make sure we are allowing some registered dispensaries to open in the city. I would feel much more comfortable with the expanded definition of schools, which, which I think is appropriate, if we changed the distance to 500 feet as required by state law. That would keep dispensaries away from schools, but also increase the area in which they could be located.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Did you want to make an amendment to the amendment, or do you want to deal with the, again, I think it's wise to deal with the one amendment at a time, but?
I did not make an amendment in respect of your not to amend the amendment protocol for this meeting.
Thank you.
But I, I will. If this amendment fails, I will be making an amendment to re-enter that language with a 500-foot distance.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment proposed by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor McPhail, and that is to change the language in item B six? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment only. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail? Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion fails three to four. Counselor Berman.
Mr. Mayor, I wish to amend this motion to include the language that Counselor Johnson just introduced regarding distance from schools, but striking his 1,000 and changing it to 500 feet.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman to keep the same language. A registered dispensary may not be located on a property within, instead of 1,000 feet, it's 500 feet of the property line of a public or private school, pre-K through 12, for the purposes of the ordinance. School includes public school, private school, or public preschool program as defined in 20 AM RSA subsection 1, or any other educational facility that serves children from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. Additionally, no sign or other advertisement may be displayed within 500 feet of a property line of a public or private school, pre-K through 12. That is the amendment offered by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Archer?
Just for clarification, we're effectively taking Counselor Johnson's initial amendment, modifying it down to 500, and that's Counselor Berman's?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that same knowledge, just because my brain's processing as a Venn diagram, I can't add all those. However, if it was just a public pre-K, because I can visualize that along with the four others rather than 20, I'd be more amendable to that. I'm not making amendment. But at this point, it's a no, just because, again, it's the same, I'm using that same process of why I denied Counselor Johnson's to Counselor Berman's, unless we're a little bit more, again, if you can visualize 500 feet at every single property, I don't know what it would look like. Would it look like a scatter plot graph? I don't know.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, roll call, vote on the amendment only. Counselor Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four, three. The amendment passes, my apologies. Any further amendments? We've had eight so far. Counselor Johnston.
All right, so the next ones are their additions, their new. So as we discussed earlier, this is a conditional use review. I would like to require that it also have site plan review. I have found that to be very common in every other ordinance I read. And they run concurrently. You can run them at the same time. It's just an extra level of performance standards that hopefully we'll be adopting that you won't find in conditional review.
Where would you like to place this new language?
I mean, I think it could be added to that same section, but that's probably for the experts.
Under conditions for dispensaries, types, location, and conditions for dispensaries, you would like to add under item B?
Site plan review is required prior to issuance of any occupancy permit.
Site plan review, which would, I think it becomes B-8?
Sounds good.
Any, the amendment's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Again, this is adding a new section in there that might be section seven or section eight that would require site plan review before issuance of a permit or operation. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four, three. Counselor Johnston, do you have another?
Again, these, I guess, would go in that same section. And I'll leave it up to city attorney and planner to tell me if they're acceptable. I'd like to prohibit drive-through and pickup facilities or home delivery services. There seemed to be some ambiguity there, at least for me when I was reading it. So I'm not suggesting anybody even offers drive-through. But if drive-throughs are allowed by right in the interline zoning, I have concern that they could come forward and say, I want a pickup window. And it seems easier to me to just outright deny it.
Counselor Johnston has proposed an amendment that would change section 168-4B, add subsection nine, and that is no drive-through or home delivery service related to these operations. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Counselor Archer. For discussion and discussion, Counselor Archer?
Yes, well, I'm a little bit more agreeable for the drive-through, the prohibition of a drive-through. I am not for in-home delivery because I think that would affect our most significantly disabled citizens who require this service. I would not want to prohibit in-home specifically, delivery specifically.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. To piggyback on Counselor Archer, I also would not, would not be in favor of prohibiting drive-through service. This goes back to earlier discussions that we had. Hanford has a drive-through pharmacy. We don't restrict that. And given the fact that we're still in the middle of COVID, it seems like a smart way to go for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor McPhail?
Not sure if any of you know, but is there a state regulation on that? I know recreational is allowed, home deliveries. I don't know about drive-throughs, but again, I know recreational marijuana, most places do offer a home delivery or drop off. But as far as medical, is there any state regulation to it, what they can and can't have?
The short answer is, I don't think any of us know for sure. The state statutes are ever-changing, and none of us are expert. I do believe the licensing requirements, especially for adult-use marijuana, are very specific and heavily regulated by the state. Little less so for registered dispensaries, even further less so for caregiver facilities. But I do believe there's a fair amount of control over the conditions in which sales can be made. I understand that many of them are required to have a sort of entryway where customers have their IDs checked or their prescriptions verified, and so on and so forth. So I suspect that both of those conditions may be prohibited by state law. However, there's nothing that prevents you from having them in the ordinance to provide extra clarity.
City Planner-Garnum, with the council's inclusion of site plan review in the ordinance here, if there was an allowed drive-through in the zone that one of these dispensaries went into, it would have to go through the planning board process and receive site plan approval. So they would appropriately plan for a drive-through usage or a home delivery usage. Is that correct?
Certainly. The site plan process would require the applicant to demonstrate that they have adequate queuing space for cars at a drive-through window, and that it won't interfere with safety and free movement of vehicles in nearby streets and driveways and so on.
So it won't become Route 1 on Sunday, Saturday, or Sunday morning with cars out the drive-throughs?
I can't promise that, but.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? Again, the Counselor Johnston's amendment was seconded by Counselor Archer, that is, for no drive-through or home delivery. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Nay.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion fails three, four. Counselor Johnston, do you have any further amendments?
One more. Again, to me, anyway, I felt there was enough ambiguity in this ordinance that I had concerns. So I would like to prohibit the extraction of marijuana using inherently dangerous substances. I'm aware there's other ways to do extraction, but the use of butane and other highly explosive chemicals concerns me. And there's enough language, or there's enough details out there in this state alone to have me concerned. Now, again, perhaps this is redundant, maybe it's in this ordinance, but I didn't see anything that clearly labeled it, and so I wanted to include that.
Counselor Johnston has offered an amendment to add in under 168-4B, number nine, and that is to prohibit butane extraction. Is that correct?
The extraction of marijuana using inherently dangerous substances is prohibited. I'll let someone more qualified determine what those are dangerous substances.
Dangerous substances, okay. Any, is there a second? There is no second, the motion dies.
Can I ask a clarifying question then?
Counselor Johnston?
Is extraction considered manufacturing? Okay, that's kind of how I-
Medical caregivers do it now. They're in special chambers that are inspected, so they're safe.
Right. And again, I understand that. I guess my concern is that you would, through this ordinance, have these dispensaries that aren't manufacturing facilities, at least they're not supposed to be, that are also extracting. And I don't think we really have anything on our books to regulate that, from what I've read. It really kind of, in my opinion, shows a glaring issue with all these ordinances when I compare them to surrounding ordinances that are very detailed and spell out what is and what isn't allowed. Because, I'll be honest, I had very little understanding of what extraction was until I started reading the ordinances. So it's kind of concerning to me that we, as a body, being city councilors, are passing ordinances that it's an area that I'm not very familiar with. I understand growing a plant. I don't necessarily understand manufacturing yet, whatever that really means. So, like I said, the motion fails, but it's something that we should probably be looking further into. Thank you.
Any further amendments? No further amendments. Back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? Amended seven times. No further discussion. Counselor Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the way I read it with all of its amendments now is that we will be effectively killing, is a term that we've used before, any recreational. And again, I still do not see the difference. There is a legal difference, I've recognized, but all it takes is that facility to just have a doctor onboard and say, hey, I see you have stress, so here's your card. So it really does nothing to affect the markets, other than that the market will change in order to meet the demands of our citizens. There are things I agree with, the things I voted on in agreement, I do agree with. But the overall document is what I must now consider, and I will have to vote this down, as it effectively kills all. Again, I've discussed that there are certain areas where this should not be, but a blanket and total prohibition of this market, I'm against. I'll be voting no based on those reasons.
Any further, Counselor Berman?
Thank you. Just in response to Counselor Archer, and also Counselor McPhail's comments earlier about this being a temporary ordinance, while this is, of course, a permanent ordinance that is going to be passed in regular order and enter city code, I do hope that we revisit it following our marijuana business opt-in discussion. We may choose to opt-in to recreational or adult-use cannabis. And if so, that will require changes to both our zoning ordinance and this ordinance, which we will then revisit and, in my mind, hopefully allow.
Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Purdy. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Counselor Archer's comments. If this was pretty much the finished matter, and this is all we have, we're going to talk about marijuana again, I would be inclined to support 168 as amended, because we improved the document, I think, significantly. However, because it does explicitly prohibit recreational use, and, like I said, I don't think any reasonable person in this room would see any real difference in the market between recreational and medicinal. I don't want to see us, once again, sort of kneecap ourselves when we have this potential boon of business that the city, and by us, the council, has already thrown into the industrial park. It's out of sight, out of mind, and we've already, and of course, tonight, that still wasn't good enough. And we still cut it down to this arbitrary 500 thing, a 500-foot thing, to make it even more difficult for them to do business. And I just, at what point are we going to stop incrementally reversing the will of the voters, as the gentleman said back in 2016, and start going in the other direction and see this as a potential growth opportunity? And I agree that I wouldn't want to see the entire industrial park go over to cannabis for the simple reason that until the federal government decides to weigh in and perhaps liberalize some of their rules on it. But at the same time, if we ever had the situation where we had people wanting to come in to fill our industrial park with good-paying jobs and a windfall for the city, wouldn't we all want that? So for the reasons I just stated, because of the recreational prohibition, which, again, I just don't see it as a viable, long-term thing for the city, I have to vote this down. And I'm going to, and hope that, as we discuss this going forward, that we realize that we're missing a serious opportunity here. If we give in to sort of the old, worn-out chestnuts about having to be X amount of places, of X amount of space from schools, or this, that, and the other, or can't have a sign-up, though, as if we live in this fictional world where kids don't know about marijuana, and/or just seeing something like that is going to expose them to this horrible drug, though, when we have bars and everything up and down the street, and they don't seem to, doesn't seem to make a bit of difference whether or not the kids start drinking or smoking or not. So, yeah, I just, if this was the last word on it, I'd probably vote for it. But since, hopefully, it isn't, I can't support it. Thank you.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. While I recognize and agree that we do need to get some ordinances in place at this particular point in time, I can't support this simply. I mean, on the agenda for tonight, under new business, we're going to be talking about the recreational opt-in, or having an opt-in discussion about that. This entire discussion is far from over, and it's going to be revisited time and time again, I'm sure. Currently, I can't support passing this. My- My concern is that if this is voted down tonight according to the rules and order of business, I don't think we can take this up again for another year. I may be wrong. Maybe the city solicitor would weigh in on that.
It is a new council, so therefore you would be barred from taking it up until the next new council, which would be next year. That's my understanding of the law.
If that's the case, here again, I don't, I recognize the need for the ordinances, and, as I said, though, the, this discussion is far from over, and I don't want to, I don't want to bar us from revisit, revisiting this in the past, so at this time, I'm going to put a motion to table until we, at the very least, until we get through the new business tonight, and maybe it can be on the next agenda.
Counselor Purdy has made a motion to table, second by Counselor Archer. Roll call vote on the table. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion to table fails four to three. Counsel, I would caution you to put something in place so that we don't have what just happened happen again. Put something in place that can be amended. Remember, you are the council. You can amend these ordinances as you see fit, in accordance with your, there's constituents that elected you. Don't fail to put something in place because you're afraid of what might come down the road. Put something in place now that gives direction to city staff and gives directions to people in the public on the process moving forward. Again, that can always be changed, and it's okay to change those once you put it in place, and then you start talking about it and say, oh, jeez, maybe that wasn't the right thing to do, let's go back and fix it. But don't fail to act. That's the only thing I would caution you as a council. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor in that regard. I mean, I certainly can understand the reservations by my fellow councilors on this. I mean, I'll be 100% honest, I'm totally indifferent about marijuana use. No one, one way or the other, I don't care, but I recognize that there is a segment of the population that's in favor, and there's equally, whether it was 58% of Saco, there's still a good, sizable portion of Saco that was not necessarily, and I don't, won't say they weren't in favor, but, you know, ultimately, you know, we're left to regulate it. And that's my concern, is that we've had it unregulated. I think that there's much more work to be done, certainly. I mean, as I have said several times tonight, I, you know, fully immersed myself with ordinances and really tried to school myself up on this, and there's a lot of detail out there that's, you know, missing in ours, and it's a good start. And I think that we should get it started and then look to make those adjustments. We just saw what happened recently. I don't want to relive that experience. You know, there's nothing more disheartening, I guess is the word, when you're approached by members of the public that are asking you, oh, how the heck did that happen? You know, as I said, I, for one, felt like I was caught with my pants down going, I can't explain it to you. So, you know, you have an opportunity here to pass what's before you. I'm not saying it's excellent. I'll be the first to tell you it's not, but it's something, and, you know, staff has put their time into it, and I think that we should, you know, do the right thing and pass what we've kind of all worked through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to speak in favor of the mayor and Counselor Johnston's opinions. I would remind the council that it is not this chapter that prohibits adult recreational use in Saco. It's the fact that we have not yet opted in to adult or recreational use in Saco that does that. At such time that we change that, we can also change this chapter and allow those to continue. If we fail to pass this, we don't change the zoning ordinance. There is still conditional use of registered dispensaries in the city. We will see more applications. It's just that they will be entirely unregulated. There will be no life safety or building code allowing us to inspection, expect them, to regulate them, to tell them what and where they can be. For example, vis-à-vis the schools. I don't view this as perfect. I haven't liked much about our process in dealing with this yet, but I think it's time to move forward, pass something, and as our discussions continue, we will continue to amend these chapters, allowing more refined or perhaps more permissive use throughout the city.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any further discussion? I did just look up the election results from the general and referendum election for November 8th, 2016, and the citizen initiative. Question one, do you want to allow the possession and use of marijuana under state law persons? Did pass the city, 5,996 to 4,936. Any further discussion on this item as amended? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Yes, with the very helpful debate of hearing both sides right now, there is truth to getting something in the books. However, to use that as hostage to not, to vote something down is not best practice either. And yes, I am aware that we haven't opted in, but if we have rule, if we opt in and the rules say you can't, you can't. So I would rather, at this point in time, just put forward a motion to allow marijuana retail stores. And that would get me on board with this whole document, with all the new changes we've made. Again, it's the fairness. It's the, it allows the city to make an action, and again, when Counselor Purdy brought up that we kind of are stuck with it, we're not, we do have the motion to rescind in the future. You do not have to wait a year to make a motion to rescind. You have a very short period of time to reconsider, but you do have pretty much eternity to rescind any current ordinance out there. There are rules on how to do it. So I would like to put forward to allow both retail and caregiver stores. And again, that would, we still wouldn't be able to do that until we opt in. However, when that decision comes, you wouldn't have to make an amendment or even revisit this whole document, which would allow us to revisit everything that's been discussed on the floor and that of the unknown.
So Counselor Archer, are you looking to put back in the language that was removed under Counselor Berman's?
No, no, he can still, he, my understanding is Counselor Berman omitted caregiver retail stores. Mine is to allow marijuana stores. So effectively, the city expressly prohibits would be voided. And I would use some legal interpretation on how to write the city allows, because that, I would refer to you on how to draft that language, but to allow retail sales. Recognizing everything else that we've amended puts both fail safes into the system.
So in Section 168, item dash three on page seven, the item B was amended to remove caregivers and other, and just specifically retail sales, and it says, "The city expressly prohibits the establishment operation, maintenance of all marijuana retail stores in any place within the city." That is, you would like to remove that entire sentence?
Effectively, or to amend it, to talk in the affirmative rather than the negative in the sense of prohibition.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer to amend item 168-3 to allow for retail stores. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion. Counselor Gunn, seconded. Counselor Purdy?
For clarification, could you, are we, we're talking 168-3B?
Yes, that's correct.
For starters, Mr. Mayor, could you read me how it reads now as amended?
As amended, it reads the item B, retail stores. The city expressly prohibits the establishment operation and maintenance of all marijuana retail stores in any place within the city.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor. I believe my amendment included the words adult-use recreational in place of caregiver and others.
Yes, it did.
So it should read adult-use recreational retail sales should be the underlined title.
Yes, that is correct. Any further discussion on Counselor Archer's amendment?
I was going to continue, I was going to ask Counselor Archer to read it as he would have it amended.
Again, I want some further review, which can, which has been done before, but effectively the intent is to allow both caregiving and marijuana retail stores.
And my question for this city attorney would be, would this amendment inadvertently opt us in?
It's clearly an opt-in decision, because the statute...
I guess my, my, sorry, let me clarify. This would opt in for retail sto, medical retail, not recreational?
No, the, the, I'm getting cut. Counselor Archer's amendment is to permit adult-use recreational. That's an affirmative decision of the council and would be viewed as the opt-in decision on adult use.
Thank you. I guess my, yeah...
I could further amend it, and you could help me with the wording, but you can actually make a pending outcome to allow pending an opt-in vote, affirmative...
Now, the way, the way state law is drafted is, it says, any amendment of a zoning or statute of the city that makes a decision becomes the opt-in decision. So that it would be not, we wouldn't be able to argue this...
With that new knowledge, I withdraw the motion. I don't want to inadvertently having us opt in without a true discussion on opting
Just to be clear, Saco's current zoning ordinance already allows medical marijuana retail in the form of both caregiver and registered dispensary sales. What is not allowed is any of the four types of adult-use marijuana businesses. So just to clarify, there may not be any confusion around that, but those businesses are already allowed, I believe, as it was initially written. Section B would have prohibited all of those retail uses, including caregiver, registered dispensaries, and, of course, as is implied by the lack of an opt-in ordinance, the adult-use recreation businesses.
So I did put, I am going to withdraw this motion based on I don't want to inadvertently make us make a decision on opting in or not, but effectively using that same legal, that same argument, I'll just call it argument, we are effectively opting out by passing section B as written, correct? So why are we having an opt-in, opt-out discussion in a minute, like, a couple minutes, a couple points down the road? Because we'll be confirming we're opting out with the passage of this current amended document.
You're opting, you're opting out for now until you guys take up the much broader decision of recreational adult-use marijuana in the entirety, which is why it's being brought to you under new business that will start the discussion, and it will be transferred to the planning board and then come back to you for a final, final review. And that's kind of why this is being done. But again, adopting something in the meantime, while that process takes place, again, I would caution the council to do it.
And if I understood correctly, Counselor Berman's proposed amendment removed the medical marijuana businesses from that provision so that this really would, the prohibition would only apply to adult use. Is that correct?
So Counselor Archer, you're withdrawing your amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn, are you good withdrawing the second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion on the now main motion as amended? On the main motion as amended, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six, one. That brings us to item B, a first reading, Chapter 175, Senior Tax Assistance Program, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. City staff have identified that there were not enough appropriate positions within the city to continue to support the senior work-off program. To ensure our most vulnerable residents can remain in their homes, this revision to Chapter 175 provides a match to the main property tax fairness credit and a bridge to implementation of LD 1638, which is an act to help seniors and certain persons with disabilities remain in their homes. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of Chapter 175 revisions and set the public hearing for January 3rd, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Hearing no discussion, a roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Brings us to item C, public hearing, a renewal application for special entertainment permit Biddeford Saco Country Club. Counselor Berman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Biddeford Saco Country Club has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. This permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. Governor Mills, on March 17th, 2021, signed new legislation to extend the liquor license period for 90 days, effective with renewal starting on March 18th, 2021. This 90-day extension is based on the forced closure of in-person dining from March 18th, 2020, through June 16th, 2020. The applicant's new liquor license expiration date will be March 31st, 2023. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment subsection 93-dash-two. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to open the public hearing at 8:38. Public hearing is now open. Those folks who would like to speak on this item, the renewal of application for a special entertainment permit for Biddeford Saco Country Club, please come forward and be heard. Seeing that there's nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant renewal application submitted by the Biddeford Saco Country Club for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license and to approve the order.
Motion's been made to close and grant by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. At 8:39. Brings us to item D, a public hearing renewal application for special entertainment permit Brings us to Item D, a public hearing renewal application for special entertainment permit, River Winds Events LLC. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beth Austin, Doing Businesses As Is RW Events LLC, has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. Governor Mills, on March 17, 2021, signed new legislation to extend the liquor licensure period by 90 days, effective with renewal starting on March 18, 2021. This 90-day extension is based on the forced closure of in-person dining from March 18, 2020 through June 16, 2020. The applicant's new liquor license expiration date will be May 25, 2023. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93, Act 2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer to open the public hearings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, public hearing's now open. Those wishing to speak before the council and public hearing, come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Archer?
Yes, I move to approve the order. Oops, sorry, my bad. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Counselor Archer, are you just closing the public hearing and not granting the-
I'm sorry?
Are you just closing the public hearing or are you not granting the renewal application?
Oh, I moved to close the public hearing and order that the city coun- sorry about that, yes. That the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Beth Austin, Doing Businesses As Is RW Events LLC, for a special entertainment permit for events as per the current zone agreement, contract zone agreement, and shall permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7:30 at 8:42. Thank you very much. That brings us to Item 10 of tonight's agenda, and that is New Business. We have two items for review. Item A is Marijuana Businesses' Opt-In Discussion, and Item B is Review Rules and Order of Business. At this time, I'm going to authorize a five-minute recess, five-minute recess before we get into these items, times now 8:43, so let's be back by 8:50.
Thank you for that brief recess with that city planner, Garnum. Good evening, Mayor Doyle, councilors. Well, so I learned a few things during a very recent discussion on the zoning ordinance, or sorry, the marijuana ordinance that was under discussion. But as you of course are well aware, I have been trying to work with the board and you all to devise updated zoning regulations for marijuana businesses. And so the reason we're talking about marijuana again this evening is so that we basically can obtain more clarity about what the goals should be that I and the planning board are working towards. So this is intended to be either an information gathering session or a sort of launching point to facilitate, whether it's through surveys or some other means, a way for you to sort of steer the board. To provide a little bit of context, I, during a recent planning board meeting, discussed putting it on the calendar to start laying out options, sort of a menu of different considerations and the types, different types of regulations and performance standards, such as you were discussing earlier this evening. And the planning board gave me some very clear feedback in which they asked for such clarification before they're willing to spend the time conducting the hearings and drafting regulations for your recommendations. So I don't quite yet feel like a ping pong ball, but you know, we could get there. So some of what I'll talk about in the next few minutes might be a little bit too basic, given, you know, all the things that were just discussed. But my goal here is to really provide a very brief summary of the broad categories of local marijuana regulations that are authorized in Maine and to highlight the key questions that I think I and the board want to know we have the answers to before we go much further. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation, just as much for entertainment as a way to sort of guide the discussion. So just to be clear, I believe everyone knows this, but I just want to make sure that we're all understanding the same terms. The state authorizes two broad categories of marijuana uses, marijuana businesses, medical versus adult use, which are also known as recreational. The most important difference between those two uses, I think, is that for medical businesses, their customers must have a prescription. So in order for you and I to purchase goods from a medical marijuana business, whether it's a caregiver or a registered dispensary or whatever else may come up in the evolving statutes, we must have a prescription from a licensed provider. I don't know anything about the relative merits of those doctors and producers and retailers, but that is the primary characteristic of medical marijuana business activity. As you see on the basic slide here, the two basic types are of medical marijuana businesses are caregivers, which some caregivers are licensed to sell their product to their patients, and registered dispensaries, which, as you all, I believe, are aware, that is the business type that applied for a conditional use permit to operate in downtown Saco. As noted during our discussion, medical marijuana businesses are allowed in Saco and they have been for at least four years. Perhaps it's been longer, but as you know, I have not been here very long, so I don't You all have recently, not only with the regulations that you were discussing earlier this evening, but in recent amendments to the zoning ordinance, you all did provide some clarification around zoning for medical marijuana businesses when you limited those uses to industrial and business industrial zoning districts. Your ordinance did previously have them allowed in general business and downtown zoning districts, as I'm sure you all are aware. The other thing about medical marijuana businesses, at least as they compare to adult use businesses, is they are not regulated as heavily by the state. They do need state licenses to operate and they do need to demonstrate compliance with local licensing requirements and limited state criteria, but they are not regulated as heavily as adult use businesses. So there's a bit of a tradeoff in looking at these two types from a zoning standpoint. Medical uses do not have as large a customer base and therefore one would expect that the market does not necessarily support as many of those as the adult use business types. But then the flip side is they are not regulated very heavily and I have heard anecdotes that the standards for becoming a licensed medical marijuana doctor or caregiver or provider may not be very stringent, but I'm not an expert on the relative difficulty or the types of qualifications needed for that. So compared to, comparing adult use to medical, again, the primary defining characteristic of medical marijuana businesses is that medical marijuana is purchased by anyone 21, age 21 and over. So any of us can today walk into a licensed and approved and operating adult use marijuana business and buy the products that are in that store, provided we show ID and pay for them. As you well know, any type of adult use business is by default prohibited from a local municipality until an ordinance is adopted that expressly allows those uses. Those uses are a little clearer, there's a little clearer distinction between the different types of adult use business licenses that are provided by the state, retail, manufacturing, testing, and cultivation. Retail being a store, manufacturing being a place that does packaging, extraction, they make oils and who knows, all kinds of things. Testing are laboratories where they test the actual product for things like potency and, you know, marijuana has a lot of different natural chemicals and compounds in it, so they analyze the products for those compounds so that the consumers can know what they're buying, how much of it, so on and so forth. And then cultivation is what you would think it is. It's agriculture, although here in Maine, that's typically indoor, so it's almost, it functions almost more like a nursery. And as I mentioned before, adult use marijuana businesses are very heavily regulated by the state. The licensing program is not only expensive for the business owners, but it involves routine inspection by the state to ensure compliance with the many state laws that they have to adhere to. And those laws, I'm not an expert on them, but they cover many things from security apparatus to their layout within the store and the procedures for checking identification of customers and so on and so forth. So I have a little asterisk on this slide. One of the things that I've seen, even just looking around the materials on the Internet, the word dispensary, I think, may cause a little bit of confusion among people because I've seen it used to describe both recreational retail marijuana stores and registered dispensaries, which are medical marijuana stores. So again, I want to point out that one is essentially a type of pharmacy and the other is a store where you go buy stuff so you can get high. And so now I have a little fun quiz. This was intended to provide a little brevity. I pulled some images on the Internet of, these are all businesses that are licensed by the state of Maine. Two of them are registered dispensaries and two of them are adult use retail businesses. And if you're like me, they don't really look any different from the outside. So there's no, there's no real point to this except to say that, you know, in some ways from a zoning standpoint, there really isn't a big difference between the two types, but from a legal and permitting standpoint, there's a big difference between the two operations. And just to give away the answer, the two that are circled in red are the dispensaries. So from where I sit as your city planner, looking at your zoning ordinance and the fact that it was amended recently as it pertains to marijuana uses and where they're allowed, there is a section in the zoning ordinance that provides standards that are not as detailed as what you were discussing earlier this evening, but there are performance standards that are criteria for licensing of marijuana businesses. From where I sit, medical marijuana businesses are by and large already regulated in Saco. You've already expressed at least some of your goals and intent or interest in how to regulate those. So without maybe clear feedback, it was my sort of presumption that medical marijuana regulation in Saco is pretty much all set. Now, I did learn through your discussions earlier that there are some things that you'd like to see developed and through your, the chapter, was it 168? Those regulations have, to at least some extent, been devised. So from my point of view, the really big question facing you all, and I understand that you can't answer this directly as, during this discussion, but should, should the city of Saco opt in to allowing adult use marijuana businesses? I personally do not have a position on this matter in any way, shape, or form. I just highlighted a couple of my first points in here, actually pretty much all of them. And so I think this is the, this is the real question that I'm going to be looking at with the planning board, because were the board to consider recommending adult use marijuana businesses, I think it sort of logically follows that regulation of medical marijuana businesses will be proposed to fall in line. So if adult use retail businesses are allowed, well, if you ask me, it makes sense to regulate registered dispensaries the same way because they're basically the same thing, it's just their customers are different. So that leads me, leads us to some of the sub-questions. Again, there are, some of these questions are things that you were discussing, I think, as they pertain more to medical marijuana businesses. But if Saco was to opt in to allowing adult use businesses, you know, these are some of the following big questions. Where to allow is probably the most important one. There is a default, it seems, to limit them to, say, industrial zones, however, that may truly conflict with some of the goals expressed in your comprehensive plan or in your economic development plans, maybe not all of them, and it would be for you to determine that. But, you know, just, just to go back here, you can kind of see, at least one of those is very clearly in what would be a sort of general business or retail type of district. So anyway, I'm not trying to get into the weeds here. I'm just really providing an overview of these big questions that I think it would be very helpful to the board, if not myself, to understand, you know, what you perceive the goals to be for the city, and I realize you're not all going to think the same way. So these are some of the other questions, how many to allow, we were just talking about that. Permitting licensing process, so some of the ordinances I've seen have a very detailed processes for obtaining licenses and inspections. Many of them have, relative to our other permit fees, some very, very high permitting fees and within reason those are allowed by state statute. So we would need to, as an ordinance in the zoning code, we would need to set permit fees. Inspection program, again, you talked about that, but that is something that could be moved into the zoning code if a major overhaul or an opt-in to adult use were to be considered. And then the performance standards, and those can range everywhere from requiring security measures at the properties to design, you know, design requirements for the way the stores look, separation from other uses, you know, the city has a lot of leeway in devising and administering those. So that gets me to my punchline. The planning board requests input from you all, as I said, and the next steps I'm not really sure about. I would love it if you all just told me what you think. I brought my pen and pad of paper, but I did hear one suggestion of perhaps preparing a survey that I could share with you and that you could send back to me. I don't know of another strategy, I'm not exactly sure if this is an option here, but there may be a way perhaps for you all to consider the opt-in question by itself, and I'd be happy to work with you on that if that is an option and is something that is desirable. I would think it wouldn't be too hard to draft with supporting documentation some language saying, "We hereby resolve to," you know, sort of authorize the council to, you know, consider, or sorry, authorize the planning board to, you know, make recommendations for opting into adult uses. We generally support this with the caveats that this does not hereby opt in by itself. That would happen during development of the subsequent ordinance. So those are the only three strategies I can think of, but I'm open to ideas. I've never devised marijuana zoning for a city before, so I don't know what the best way to do it is. So I'd be happy to take any questions or comments, really anything at all.
Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Hatch, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Couple of things here. Number one, I'm, I mean, the big question is, do we opt in? And I'm okay with that. I don't feel strongly about it, but I'm okay with it. It's a legitimate business, it's legal in Maine. Obviously, there are some difficulties with federal law, but it's legal in the state and I'm okay with a legal business operating in the city. So that getting, that being out of the way, I'm okay with opting in. The question is where, how many, I mean, that, and these are all things for future discussions, maybe some of the councilors have some opinions on that as the discussion goes on. I do have one question has, I'm going to throw Portland Road, for example. Has there ever been any serious discussion about other locations, whether it be for medical or recreational? I don't see Portland Road as a heavily residential area and I certainly think that's something that's worth looking into, especially where the industrial park and Millbrook intersect with it anyway. Food for thought, something worth exploring as far as I'm concerned. And with that, I'll let others talk.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Planner, I'm, just so I'm clear on this, is the, is the planning board looking for, for lack of better terms, some sort of straw poll from the council about whether or not there are the votes to even have a formal or informal, depending on how we do this opt-in? Because, I mean, my understanding would be that they would work under the assumption that it's a choice that's going to be left to us, that they come back with some options and based on what they give us, we ultimately make the decision, I mean, like to Counselor Purdy's point, I mean, I'm no prohibitionist, as anyone can notice when it comes to marijuana, but at the same time, I also don't want to have a situation where we're voting on something where it's just not sustainable or not particularly well. So my, going back to my question is what type of feedback, I mean, are they looking for this simple up and down, yes or no, before they even talk about it? Or do they want just more of our, they just want to go at it assuming that we're going to say yes, those type of details? Well, how are they actually approaching it? Because I'm curious to what, how they're expecting us to sort of, you know, guide them going into this one. I, one would assume that they would simply on their own volition go, well, if we want to go legal, but not a lot of it, this is how we want to do it, if we want to legal, it'll be more permissive, this is how we want to do it. I would assume that's how they approach it, but what are they thinking?
So I'll make a couple of responses on that. The ordinary zoning amendment process, as I'm sure you all know well, is, you know, we would look at options and recommendations with the board. They would devise a set of draft regulations with a recommendation to you, you know, to maybe amend them in a minor way, but you would receive from the board a fairly complete, this is what, this is what the planning board recommends to you, the council, to adopt. So my understanding is that they want to know that something like that has any chance of passing before they do the work and spend the time torturing the subject in their own public hearings. Now, from my view, I think I've known all along that this, this would be a more iterative process than a typical zoning amendment in that, you know, were I to get enough feedback to at least be able to state our very, the broadest goals, you know, yes, the council does want to entertain opting in, yes, they want to put these basic types of limitations in place. You know, I think, I think what we would probably do is, well, of course, start with a workshop at the board, report to you what I heard, you know, devise a draft, a set of draft regulations, again, go back to the board for a hearing and so on and so forth. Because of course, we all understand that this is a, this is a very potentially contentious issue. We understand that, you know, a perfect set of regulations for your community is probably not attainable, but the more care and time and feedback mechanisms we put into it, the better it's going to be, or at least the better we're going to be able to say that we did the work. So I don't know if that directly answered your question, but...
No, it did get to the substance of it, though. This, I said, again, the frustration about the situation is because it's such uncharted territory, vis a vis the law, vis a vis anything that we've done in the past, so there seems to be this sort of, well, two years ago, it was like, one side didn't want to talk about it, one side didn't want to talk about it, and now we're in a situation where at least we both want to talk about it, but there's sort of like the one side setting the parameters for the other. And, I mean, my, I said, my two cents would be to have the planning board approach it as if we would vote to opt in. That being said, give us options where you have the opt-in, where it's kind of closer to what we've done with medical, where it's out in the industrial park, you know, out of sight, out of mind, or perhaps a little more permissive, where it's perhaps on Portland Road. I mean, I represent Ward Three, and from industrial park to the Scarborough Line, there's more than enough potential, I mean, for anything out there, especially considering it's straight in, straight out of Saco, there's no, barely any interaction with the downtown. So I mean, there's definitely more, if we want to make this a viable option, there's definitely options in Saco and not, doesn't have to even touch the downtown or other places where it gets people understandably hot on the issue. At the same time, you know, they could always also give us option three, which is, no, actually we've looked at it and we've decided as planning board, it probably doesn't work for Saco. So at least keep it all fair for all sides, though. But, you know, maybe two, maybe the ratio of like two or three options, hey, maybe we can do something with it, maybe one option is we've decided not to, you know. At least that's how I would approach it, I suppose, if I was on their side, but...
Thank you.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a two-level question. First, first piece of it is, you've been immersed in the comp plan development process over the last few months. Has the issue of opting in or opting out or recreational marijuana come to the forefront in any of the discussions in the comp plan?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Not at all.
That's helpful. Not helpful, but it's helpful. So my actual point here with this, and I think you've laid it out really well, to me, I think this is a unique situation. I think you articulated well how the planning board would typically work. We've all seen it, I understand it, I think it works pretty well. But I do think there, every once in a while, you get these unique situations where it may be in the best interest of the planning board to have some direction from the council, because otherwise they could be spinning their wheels, doing a lot of extra work, not that they don't want to work, but, but there's a lot of other things going on in the city that they need to be focused in on. So I wouldn't want them working on, you know, a proposal that we're not even clear we're going to opt in. So in my head, I think that decision needs to be made. Now, how do we make, I sit here, I don't want my personal biases to enter into my decision. I want my constituents to drive my decision, because that's what I've been brought to office to do. So I'm feeling like, for me to do my job properly, I need to get to some information about how people feel. Now, we had the vote, we had the statewide vote, so you can use that as a litmus test, but it was pretty close. I'm not sure anybody who voted in that election really thought about the weeds that we're talking about here, okay, not, no pun intended. So I'm wondering if we can come to some consensus on how do we kind of get some feedback? We didn't get it through the comp plan. You know, I'm looking at your choices here, survey, you know, I don't know if that's going to be representative, because you don't know who's going to respond to the survey. But I guess my point is, is that I feel like the council needs to give that direction, opt-in, opt-out direction to the planning board, and if it's an opt-in, then you can go do your thing. If it's opt-out, it's a moot point.
Exactly. And getting the kind of feedback, Counselor Hatch, that you're looking for from your constituents can be expensive.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, you know, I can't help but notice that, you know, despite the conversation we're having right now and the several amendment discussions you've had over the last couple of months, I don't see an engaged citizenry standing behind me. So I don't know how to find that information and...
That's a fair response.
That, I suppose, sort of pushes it back onto your table as the elected representatives of your community. of your community.
Ward Five did approve the Question One Citizen Initiative, 877 to 689, in 2016, November of 2016. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly agree with what Counselor Hatch just said. You know, you started your presentation out, you know, saying that perhaps council is not prepared today, you know, to weigh in, whether we opt in or opt out. I think, me personally, and while it may be unpopular with members of the public, or even fellow counselors here, I mean, I'm prepared. I look at this, and I understand we can sit there and ramble off election results, but something happened that was key here. And that was a law change in 2018 that basically made, as you've laid out, medical marijuana, there's really no difference. So we're already regulating the medical side of this. I see no need for the retail side of this. You already have it through the medical. It's one little thing. And I've spoken to people that smoke marijuana on the regular, and they explained to me how easy it is to get that card. It's one added step. So what we're really doing is just making it a simpler step for those same users to go and, you know, acquire their product. I think it's unnecessary at this stage in the game. Again, as I've said throughout this process, there's so much to unpack here, there's so much to understand that we don't understand. I mean, I have a question that just popped in my mind tonight. Can we opt in to some of these, not all? So could we opt to retail? So, thank you for that answer.
Yes.
I mean, that's kind of compelling to me, because perhaps we want to do testing only, and that fits into the industrial park.
You can do that.
Because maybe perhaps that creates jobs. My concern here is, from everything I've researched, you know, I've said it before, my sister lives in California, in LA, she's explained to me exactly what it's like out there. The vast majority of these retail jobs are few and far between. We're not creating a lot of jobs here. Manufacturing side, maybe that's totally different. So I'm more inclined to be on that side of, you know, this argument, and say, hey, if we can create 40 jobs, as, you know, the speaker said earlier tonight, then maybe there's some benefit there. But just having a retail shop with a handful of employees, I think that there's very little benefit and many disadvantages to our community. So, again, that's where I stand. The other question I have is, could this be considered an accessory use? So the concern I have is that you have, say, a gas station as a primary use, but we don't regulate the, you understand what I'm saying? They come and say, I'm going to be an accessory use, and now they're selling marijuana, along with their cigarettes and alcohol and everything else. And I think that's something that, going forward, if council is going to move forward, we should regulate that out of the picture.
That's a great point. I'm fairly certain that the state law prohibits accessory uses or tandem, you know, other uses. I know the state law prohibits sale of cigarettes.
Right.
Out of recreational marijuana businesses. But I believe, in the statute, it limits non-marijuana, sale of non-marijuana products to very few things, and it lists like, T-shirts, bumper stickers, that kind of thing. They can't, you know, they can't have a produce store over here and call it, you know, Jay's Vegetable Market, and then have a nice, you know, weed counter over on the other side.
Right. And, you know, that's good to know, but that's present law, you know, as Counselor McVale just said to me. Because I am aware that in state of California, you are able to do that. So whatever we're putting forth, I would want to make sure that our regulations are touching upon all the possibilities, because we end up with situations that were unintended. We see it time and time again throughout the city with different subjects, you know, that go uncaught or unforeseen. So, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, you know, where I'm standing. I just, we just passed these new ordinances. I personally think we kind of should let them figure themselves out. We just, did we, I don't even remember, did we end up limiting the amount? No. So basically, we could have 35 applicants tomorrow morning, since we, if I'm correct, this is retroactive. Yes, that was in the ordinance, it was retroactive, back to January 11th, 2021. So tomorrow morning, we could have somebody knocking down the door, as I suspect we will, given some of the level of interest in this, just in these chambers, looking to move forward with some of these uses. So why don't we let the medical side of things figure itself out? Maybe we determine there's more of a demand than we anticipated, and then we opt in. I can tell you for one, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I have not had anybody pounding down my door asking for retail marijuana. They have found their marijuana, however they found it. Now, that's not for me to figure out, but it's not something that somebody stops me and say, hey, I'd really love a retail marijuana shop. I'm not saying they're not out there, but to date, it hasn't occurred. So, you know, as Counselor Hatch said, I think back in, oh, whatever, 2016, when we passed the recreational law, most of the voters had no concept of what, how we regulated it. And I think we've, since then, in 2018, have come up with a backdoor, I guess, is how would I explain it? Through the caregivers and medical side of things, where we already have it. So what's really the difference? Just stick with what we have, and let's figure out what happens in Saco. Not just because, you know, Portland's doing it, or some other community around us, I'm only concerned with Saco. Thank you.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spent a lot of time thinking about citizen engagement on this issue. Even went out of my way to write a newspaper column, begging citizens to provide input to me and the rest of council. Despite the fact that column was read several hundred times, I've gotten exactly zero emails on this issue. I simply don't find that our constituents are significantly engaged on the question of medical, or sorry, retail adult-use cannabis. When I think about this, I think about two pieces. There was one question of whether we want to opt in as a community. And there I think about the value of prohibition, and alcohol, as was mentioned earlier by several other counselors, comes to mind. As far as I can tell, both as a professional behavioral neuroscientist and my personal research, cannabis seems safer in almost every way, when we compare it against alcohol. That's true in the amount of impairment, that's true in terms of driving incidents, that's true in terms of its addiction potential, that's true in terms of its health consequences. And so when I ask myself, what is the value of prohibition of adult-use cannabis, especially in a community which has wine and beer sales on Main Street, which has gas stations that sell liquor off of Elm Street, that have bars, likely more bars than churches right now, spread throughout our town, I find myself lacking a compelling interest in keeping it prohibited, especially when it's been legalized on the state level. That being said, I don't think it's exactly akin to medical marijuana regulation. And I think that's not because an adult-use retail store is fundamentally different than a medical registered dispensary, but I do think it's because of the number of available outlets in our neighboring communities differs. There are many registered dispensaries and caregiver dispensaries in Biddeford, Scarborough, South Portland, Portland, and around the community. There are very many fewer adult-use stores. It could become an attractant to people and drive traffic in ways that a registered dispensary would not. And that might give us some reason to regulate it differently, place it differently, and/or limit it in ways that we might not with a registered dispensary or medical use. Anyway, those are my two cents.
Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you. So, still processing on what happened tonight, because, again, it just happened. But when a change happens, you should assess that change before you make any new decisions. We don't even know what the impact of what we just passed will do. So rather than, if they're looking for guidance, again, I don't like to give guidance, because I take information up to the last minute to make my decisions. So to present prematurely is not good for the process between the board and the council. But I would recommend, I would say that maybe now is not the time to start discussing this, and that we should be assessing and watching what this new ordinance does over six months or a year. I am interested in the discussion. I'm interested in seeing what the board has to say, but first, let's just assess the data that we're going to get soon. I think that's probably the best approach, because to rush into the next level is probably not beneficial when we don't even know what we have. So while I am interested in future discussions, at this point, I don't know if it would be beneficial until we have more data.
Any further discussion? Counsel, there's been a lot of questions and a lot of discussion over the past six months about marijuana. Marijuana's here. It's now time to make some decisions on it. And while you've made some decisions on some of the areas of marijuana, it's now time to take up opting in or not. And I think Counselor Johnston, you know, made a point, he's ready, because he's been listening to the documentation and the experts over the time, and he's ready to make the decision. And I think, moving forward, I think City Planner Garnum's suggestion of a council resolution, up or down, in favor of opting in or not, sets the planning board on its way with a direction, and then maybe in the in-between, the council making some sort of resolution and direction. A survey could be put out to the city council and say, where are you on these five or six or 10 items that have been flagged as potential red spot areas? And then it'll be incumbent upon you to get them back to Planner Garnum, so he can take that, draft the ordinance, and then send it before the planning board, so that it can get its review there, if we opt in. If we opt out, it doesn't go anywhere. Right? If the council says, hey, we're not interested in this right now, we want to take some time and what have you, fine. But if we are interested as a community, as the elected officials, and you decide opt in is the right way, then the planning board can do its thing with clear guidance, and then it can come back to the city council for a final vote and implementation. And, again, at that point, you still have the opportunity to change or back out of the ordinance. So that's where I think we are, and that's what I would expect you will see in an agenda coming to you soon. Any further direction for Jason? My apologies, City Planner Garnum.
It's okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. So, just so I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like I may be directed to prepare information and send a draft motion for a resolution in the coming weeks or months? Or will we talk about that following this meeting?
City Administrator Cameron.
I was just going to bring up, again, is there interest in doing a survey, a written survey, among the council, to sort of put this in writing in a more formal way to the planning department? Or is what you've delivered tonight, you feel sufficient in going forward? I just want to make sure that everything is captured, and you guys feel like you had a full opportunity to submit comments and get this on the record.
I think the first piece is the opt-in piece with a resolution that maybe you could draft and send to council for an agenda upcoming. And then, again, that resolution, meaning that we opt in or we don't. And then if we do opt in, with some direction from the other surveys that will be sent out with questions based upon the seven parameters that you laid out in your presentation. And that way there, it's going to the planning board with the question of opting in, answered on all four points, right? The cultivation, testing, manufacturing, and retail. But it's going to the planning board with clear guidance and direction on what the council would like.
Yeah, it's a matter of goal articulation, right? Because, of course, myself and my limited planning team and the planning board can only work on so many policy initiatives at one time. We are preparing to, you know, review a draft comprehensive plan next month with the board, and there are dozens of strategic and policy initiatives described in there. And when we set up our work program for the coming X months, we can only prioritize so many things. And if opting into marijuana businesses is the right move for Saco, according to your opinions, then we can make that a priority. And if not, then we have plenty of other things that you're going to be seeing in a comprehensive plan real soon, that we can spend our limited time working on, so...
Plenty of other things to keep you busy, is what you're saying.
That's right. Not to mention a sustained, pretty heavy permit volume, frankly.
Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we get to adult-use opt in, is there any prohibition from just identifying a single type of adult recreational business? I wanted to say adult business the right way.
You could...
You could just say manufacturing only.
You could choose to allow manufacturing facilities in only one zoning district, and you could have a whole host of licensing requirements and performance standards, separation from other uses. Or you could, you know, you could propose to allow the whole gamut in every zone in the city. There are almost infinite combinations.
Okay. So we're not categorizing recreational as it's all or nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Gunn, Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a survey would be a, definitely be a good idea. I mean, obviously, let's start with the big question, whether we think it's advisable to opt in or not. And then, you know, then you can break it down by, you know, the four different categories and...
Yeah. The challenge is...
Right. I mean, obviously, and obviously, a resolution saying that we were interested in exploring opting in doesn't, that is not the trigger for opting in. We wouldn't actually opt in until we actually get all the, everything, you know, set in place and would all take place at once. But, yeah, I certainly look forward to hearing from you for a survey.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, wouldn't it be prudent, given that we just entered discussion tonight, let alone discussions we've had over the last several months, it's pretty clear that we all have varying views on this issue? And now, if you're going to take the 30,000-foot view and say, up or down, and then get into the details, I mean, I see it would be more prudent to actually have the survey first, because to Counselor Johnston's point, I mean, if we agree as a council on maybe the retail aspect or other aspects of it, but don't agree on the other, then wouldn't that, we could come to some sort of consensus of what type, if we do want to opt in, we would have? And then that would be much more substantial conversation, just by, like I said, taking the survey first, though. Because if we all take the survey first, and, you know, the numbers or the interest isn't there, then that pretty much settles the question, even without a vote, and saves us a lot of time and effort, I suppose. But we take the survey, and we all come to, we realize, based on what we've, the feedback that we send to the city planner, hey, maybe there's some common ground already, maybe then we can take the vote, because maybe we're looking, maybe one of us is looking at an angle that we haven't seen before, that another council, counselor brings up, by having time to sit down, actually think about the question, and think about all the angles, though. Wouldn't that be a more constructive way to look at this, rather than simply go up or down based on sort of whatever our individual imaginations or thinking it could be, when in reality, we could have a consensus right underneath the radar, that none of us have really ever gotten to the weeds yet, because we haven't really, you know, like I said, we haven't really discussed the details that thoroughly? Just my thought.
Thank you. The idea here is to have the opt-in question answered first, and not waste further time, money, and resources on going down an avenue. And then it also sets up a position where then you, through the surveys, send a clear direction to the planning board, that yes, you're either opting in on one of the four points, or no, you don't want to opt in, and... that, yes, you're either opting in on one of the four points, or no, you don't want to opt in, and there's no need for the planning board to even take it up. And I think one of the other things you want to stay away from is, as we've talked about before, voting through email. We don't want to start that. Whereas goal-setting through, you can send your goals on a certain subject to the city planner or other city staff, of course, through the city administrator. But we don't want to get into a position where there's a vote, or something.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I just, we have taken, I apologize, we have taken surveys before in terms of like, goal-setting for the council, brought it before, staff has brought it before council, and we have voted on it sort of up or down in terms of, you know, our priorities for a new council. I just see this as a constructive way to get around, as I guess, and perhaps finding common ground, rather than maybe having a four-three vote one way or the other. When in reality, if we get to some common ground, we actually might have some actual consensus. I just see it as a more proactive way of going about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One concern I have about the survey is one you just articulated, where we'd be asked to suggest how we were voting prior to actually taking a vote. That would be ill-advised. I wouldn't want to question, would you vote to opt in or not opt in, given the option? Goal-setting, of course, is an entirely different issue. And just to further think about the fact that should an ordinance come before us, or a resolution come before us, directing the planning board to either investigate opting in or not, we would have discussion at that point, which would also allow us to build consensus around those issues.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? So again, you will see two items coming before you on the agenda. One, at some point, you will see, excuse me, you will see one item on the agenda, and that'll be a resolution with several pieces and points. And then you'll see a survey that will come to you via email, and we ask that you get it back to Director Garnum as soon as possible, so they can start setting up for their year in the planning department. With that, we'll move on to item B, and that is review the rules and order of business. Counsel, it is 9:42. So if we want to continue moving forward, we have to take a vote to continue, because I think we've, we've stopped at the 9:30 mark on new business. And so with that, I think the items on new business is really informational only. And if you have any changes that you would like to see, please get them to City Administrator Keanrath before the next meeting. But we can continue if you'd like, but it's really just an informational piece at this time. But we will be taking up a vote on the rules and order of business at the next meeting. So, is there a motion to continue? Or, or do we feel that we have the informational pieces needed to make here any amendments that you see fit? The city clerk has gone through the process of looking at minutes from different communities and provided you an overview on that, because there was discussion about the city minutes earlier in the year. Okay, I don't see any motion to continue, so that brings us to item 11, city administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple items. The Saco Police Department Pink Patch Project. Please join the Saco PD in their fight against breast cancer and to support breast cancer research through the Pink Patch Project. The Pink Patch Project is an innovative public awareness campaign designed to bring attention to the fight against breast cancer. Through the sale of collectible uniform patches, public safety agencies worldwide are fighting together. For the 2021 Collectible Pink Patch, please visit the Saco Police Department or call them at 284-4535. Patches are available for $10 each, and cash or check payments will be accepted. All funds raised will be donated locally to the Maine Health Breast Cancer Center in Scarborough. The Saco Fire Department will be holding a blood drive, hosting a blood drive event in partnership with the Red Cross at the Central Station, 271 North Street, on Monday, December 21st, from noon to 5:30 PM. As always, the need is great, and we hope you'll be able to join us for this important and easy way to give back. You can sign up using the link provided here. If you have any questions, please contact Fire Department Administrator Assistant, Malaika Picard. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to our public work staff, as well as Saco Main Street, for all of their work in lighting on Main Street this year with the holiday lights display up and down Main Street. A lot of work does go into this display, and I didn't want it to go unrecognized of all the efforts they put in. So thank you to all for this year's lights display. Thank you.
Any questions for the city administrator? Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Council discussion and comment this evening? No council discussion and comment, no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on adjourning? Roll call vote to adjourn, Counsel Archer? Counselor Archer, roll call vote to adjourn?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7:0 at 9:45. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.